Vivian Bridgestones, Vice Chair, calling this committee of the whole meeting to order. I'd like to recognize this meeting is being held on the traditional territory of the Little Wat Nation. And I need a motion to approve the agenda, please. Move it by. Jen, seconded by Director DeMare, thank you. And the first item, oh, all in, any opposed? Seeing none?
Chair, just leave the, leave the room for a minute.
Alright. The next item is Regional Moment, with our Director, Area C. Please go ahead, Russell.
Hi, everybody. So these, is, who's running us that you're in? Is Patricia in the room?
Good morning, Director Mack. We have Yvette, who will be running the slideshow for you. So you can just let us know when you're ready to change the slide.
Okay, you can move the next one. So this is just the, just some photos of the flood event of January the 29th. And these, these photos. Whoever's talking is really, can't understand at this end.
I'm not sure. Okay. I have banished Director DeMare to a quieter spot, so we can hear you. Yep, we're looking at the first slide with the tractor behind the rather large puddle.
Yeah. So you can see how high the water had come up and it was, you can go to the next slide if you like. That's the Green River Bridge there. And all, a lot of this water in these slides here came from the Green River. And it's too, do we have the video that will be available as we move along here? Because the video will show, will show the golf courses and, yeah, there we go. Dunstone lost a bunch of their electric, new electric golf carts. They didn't have a chance to, to get them to high ground. So that wasn't very good. These photos, photos are all from Kevin Clark at the Dyking District. And in talking with him, like he was saying, everybody worked so well together, he was really impressed. And you can see the collaboration slide. I think that's next. It's got all the list of everybody that participated. So it was, yeah, it was really well done by everybody. So anyways, the water's gone down and everything's in good shape. So now, like up at this end here, Gates Creek was up pretty high, Birkenhead, but they're all back to normal now. So hopefully it's over for this year, for now anyways. But, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I haven't heard of any other issues that we've had with this snow, other than the roads are horrible. But hopefully that will straighten out as we get into some warmer weather here.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Director Mack. And they're certainly actively working on the roads in Pemberton today. So we have a few minutes for questions. I heard you say that the, there was some damage to the electric vehicles at the golf course, but otherwise not. And I recognize Director Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to check with Director Mack, was there any permanent infrastructure damage? Like the dikes and roads and bridges, are they all okay then? Or?
Yeah, everything is, is okay. We only had, we had one culvert up the valley, a Ministry of Transport culvert, that was causing some issues. And Kevin from the Dyking District had to have some, a serious discussion with highways because they just wanted to put cones around it and half the road was about to be gone. And he said, we, you know, they were under alert at that time. And, and if they didn't fix it right away, then we would have to evacuate the top end of the valley. So they finally got their act together and, and fixed that. So that, that didn't have to happen. But that's kind of interesting. Like I keep saying, trying to get Ministry of Transport and the contractor to do some of this work is amazing. But I noticed in the, in the budget, provincial budget, there was a number of millions of dollars, and I can't remember how many, but a number of millions of dollars put towards highways maintenance over and above the existing budget. So it'll be interesting to see if our area gets any of that money because, I mean, we've got issues with roads everywhere. So we'll have to keep that top of mind and, and not, not let them forget that.
Indeed. And I see Director DeMare.
Director Mack, Director Mack, were there extra pumps brought in to help with?
There were. They were set up, but they, they weren't actually used. The water had started to recede by then. But, yeah, that was a really good move on the Dyking District's part to get ahead of the game in case it was needed. Like I've always advocated for, like at the end of the Iron Canal, and that I think there should be a stationary pump house put in there. Like I grew up in Richmond, I worked for the city of Richmond, and I maintained all those pumps around that island for almost 10 years. So I know how effective they are. And that's the way to go. You, you need to have, you know, those structures in place. They are expensive, but you know, once they're there, they're there forever. And it's just a matter of, you know, they go on and off automatically as the water comes up and down. Then you're not always running around looking for pumps because at, at some point, we've had, like in 2003, when we had the big flood, we had a real problem getting pumps because everybody was using them. So yeah, I, I would really like to see that become a priority and, and get, get some pumps put in, like stationary pumps that are in proper pump houses. And then you wouldn't have to be worrying about this stuff. But anyways, that's a discussion for another time, I guess. Also, I was going to say, they, they, they had some issues with golf carts at Big Sky too. Because they're all parked underneath the building and same thing there. They didn't get them out of there fast enough. So yeah, that's an expensive loss, of course.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. Do we receive the Regional Moment? A motion to receive, see, so moved by Jen, seconded by Armin. Anyone opposed? Seeing none? Report received. Thank you, Russell. Full closed meeting, we do not have. So the next item is our delegation. And are they, wait, yeah, well, okay. And we'll welcome Calvin Rochon.
Yep, and Simon Gravel.
Online SAV Response Officer, and Simon Gravel.
Gravel.
Gravel. Inspector of South Coast Region, BC Conservation Officers. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
And I will turn this over to you. You have the board mostly online here to see your presentation and some of us in the room. Go ahead, please. You've got 10 minutes for the presentation and we've allowed 20 minutes for questions and answers on the grizzly bear public safety concerns.
Perfect. Are you able to hear me okay? And is Inspector Gravel, are you able to see and hear Inspector Gravel?
Yes.
Perfect. So I'll let him kick it off here. Thank you so much for having us.
Not sure we can hear Inspector Gravel.
I'm wondering if Inspector Gravel is hearing us.
There we go.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Were you, were you hearing us? We are, we're turning the presentation over to you.
Oh, okay, perfect. I can hear you now. Thanks for having me. I'm Inspector Simon Gravel from the Conservation Officer Service. I'm in charge of the South Coast Region. However, I'm fairly new in this position. Prior to this, I worked in the Sea Two Sky Zone, first as a conservation officer and later as a sergeant for about eight years. So I'm very familiar with the operation of the Sea Two Sky region. I'm gonna, thanks for the opportunity for having us today. I'm just gonna briefly give you a bit of an overview of this grizzly bear situation from our perspective. I'm going to talk about the role and responsibilities of COS. And briefly talk about the double USRO program. And on the call, we also have Calvin Rochon, that is a double USRO for this, for Squamish. And he'll be able to talk a bit about his experience as a double USRO and the benefits of this position. So first off, I'd like to say I'm not a biologist. I'm not an expert in grizzly bears' population and habitat. We also, I'm not an expert in wildlife population management. The role of the Conservation Officer Service is really to enforce the Wildlife Act. We investigate and hold people accountable that breach any laws. We also have a role to play in the public safety, but I'll come back to that. First off, I'm well aware of probably all the requests and complaints that you possibly, you probably receive from resident or in the SLRD area, and more specifically the Pemberton Meadows, related to the increase of grizzly bear population. What I know from that is like, over the years, there's been a lot of initiatives done to increase the grizzly bear population. There was, it was in decline for many years due to development and overhunting and so on. And the last, I'd say 30 years, has been a lot of initiatives put in place to increase the population of grizzly bears. And due to those initiatives, the grizzly bear population improved. I'm not speaking about this as an expert, as I mentioned already. But it is just the fact that the grizzly population in the SLRD, the Sea Two Sky area, is increasing. And that comes with some challenges. Obviously, we have more grizzly bears on the landscape. A few years ago, we met with grizzly bear, Coast to Cascade grizzly bear initiative. And they asked us, is the Conservation Officer Service is ready for, for this increase of grizzly bear? Because that's going to bring some problem. And sure enough, a couple of weeks later, we had a grizzly bear, pretty much in the city of Squamish, in the municipality of Squamish. And we had to capture and relocate to mitigate that public safety concern. And since then, it's been just increasing. So grizzly bears are increasing in our, in our landscape for diverse reasons. There's just the numbers and, you know, subadults will adventure themselves. Sal with cubs will seek some shelter. And older bears might be pushed out of their territory. And for competitive reason, they, they just disperse and we see them more and more in the interface of our community. Culturally, we're not used to this. In the recent time in the SLRD, I would say the cultural tolerance for grizzly bears is very low. We're very complacent and have been, and used to have black bears. But when a grizzly show up, the perspective and the cultural tolerance is very different. For cultural reasons, for beliefs, for a lack of education perhaps, and so on. When things happen, when grizzly bears show up in our landscape and the interface or in the residential area, the, the role of COS is to mitigate the public safety threat. Having a bear on itself in our landscape or in the area is not necessarily a safety concern. As much as maybe some people like to believe or perceive it, our role is to assess the situation, determine the behavior of the bear, why is there? And mitigate it to make sure that we're not dealing with an immediate threat that can cause harm to our resident. We take those calls seriously, we assess them, we sometimes provide advice, but we'll respond to those calls when the threat is imminent, when it's obvious that the behavior of the bear represents a threat for people's safety. Now, the threat level can be differently interpreted. Obviously, we use our expertise, our knowledge, our experience to, to make this assessment. For us, like a bear that is very habituated to people and food conditioned, will be higher on the scale of public safety. A bear that causes a lot of property damage or tried to access a building where that is occupied is obviously high on the spectrum of public safety. A bear walking by, a bear on the landscape, a bear in the field, a bear seeking food is natural bear behavior. And that doesn't belong, doesn't necessarily trigger a response for the Conservation Officer Service. But education in those cases is, is mainly the, the first response. Saying that, COS doesn't have the ability to respond to all those calls. As, as you know, we're extremely busy. The increase of, you know, of conflict in the area is ongoing, the increase of visitors and so on, poaching issues. We need to prioritize and really stay focused on our, on our core mandate. So I think the, yeah, the gap that exists is this desire from a lot of residents to see a response to address their concern, even if they're not, from the Conservation Officer Service perspective, all under our role and responsibility. Meaning that if it's not a public safety threat, they still want their reinsurance, they still want to see the face of government, they want to receive their education, receive. They want to have some certain level of support. And that's been identified as being a gap right now. And that's not a gap that the COS can fill. But you can be reassured that we always going to assess those calls and make the proper assessment and always respond if a public safety threat is imminent. Saying all this, there's a program that we have, it's the double USRO program. It stands for Wildlife Safety Response Officers that we've been developing over the years and offer to different municipalities. Whistler and Squamish are embracing this program and are paying for, for this type of service. What that allows is to create, to fill that gap. This position allowed the COS, when we're receiving calls that are not a public safety threat in nature, we still can follow up and send someone, the double USRO in the field, provide this type of support, education, do some proactive outreach, and work on the landscape to address this, those concerns from our different residents. It's a great program. We've been, it's been very, very successful in Whistler and Squamish. Both communities, as you know, are bear smart communities. So they want this, to provide this, and then services to their resident. And this program is, is designed specifically to, to provide this type of service and fill this gap that I mentioned between the, you know, the core mandate of COS and the demand from the public to have further service and education. So without further ado, maybe I'll let Calvin for a couple of minutes talk to me about his experience in Squamish as a double USRO. And after, we'll be able, we'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Calvin?
Thank you so much. And I heard a ding there. I know we started a couple of minutes over, or 9:15. So if I'm getting close to my time, please let me know. Like Sima, Inspector Gravel said, Wildlife Safety Response Officer is a great initiative, I believe, for the Sea Two Sky area. There's a lot of wildlife in this corridor, as you know. I remember Squamish and Whistler have seen great success with it. WSR practically mitigates conflict with wildlife by means of educating the public, outreach events. And especially, like he said, the key part of it is contacting concerned citizens who make reports that don't fall under the scope of a peace officer, full conservation officer. It's a relatively new position, like I said, that's been having great success. We have, we hold monthly meetings, wildlife management meetings with a bunch of stakeholders within the municipality. So that's anywhere from GFL to District of Squamish, to Communications, the mayor's office is in there, BILOs there, RCMPs, anybody who has any dealings with the public safety and wildlife sort of is there. The entire scope of the WSR program is the focus on proactive prevention and early intervention of habituation of these wildlife, as in bears. Mostly bears, honestly, but other wildlife as well. But of course, this one's about the bears. This is often done by reducing the human cause of wildlife habituation. So often, in my experience with many years of dealing with bears, it's 90, 90, 95% not a bear problem, it's often a person problem. So early intervention is key to reducing this wildlife conflict and habituation. I've seen it firsthand in Squamish. And after my five month term with Squamish, I was kind of able to expand into different municipalities and see kind of, this is how this meeting triggered. And another one was the municipality of Pemberton. WSR has a luxury of being able to action all the RAP reports, report all poachers and polluters. That's the phone number that people call when they have a concern. Not all COS have that luxury, unfortunately, because they have other mandates to follow up on. But the WSR program creates that essential link between the community that's involved in and the COS. So I'm in the COS office, but working directly kind of for the community itself. As you know, the timeline of habituation starts early, when it's getting into garbage, getting into unnatural food sources. But I find people, especially Pemberton, honestly, haven't been calling until the timeline is quite late in the habituation. As you likely have seen, in Pemberton, the car thief bears, the grizzly bears coming in. People are calling in concerned, kind of very late on the scale. And if we can get people to call in early, it helps us quite a bit. Like Sima said, if there's a grizzly bear roaming around, eating on, on natural food sources like carrots in a field that are not managed at all by fences or any sort of mitigation that can get there, people are still upset about them calling in. But the WSR program allows a COS, like, office government official to go educate the people, tell them what they can do to mitigate this, on the resources they have. Tell them that it's kind of a normal behavior of these bears that they're going to be, keep coming in, honestly. Like you said, the population is ever growing, so it's just going to keep happening. So having this link between the community and the municipality and the COS is kind of essential here. It also helps reduce the risk of animal destruction due to public safety risks by mitigating it kind of further in the line. Trying to keep it short and sweet here for you guys, but if there's any questions further following up here, please let us know.
Thank you. We do have 20 minutes for questions. And so I'm looking for hands on the screen. Director DeMare and then Mayor Hefner. Who has Russell?
Thank you. A comment was made by Mr. Gravel about the bear population is increasing because there's, there was overhunting at one time. There hasn't been any grizzly bear hunting in this area. I think the last limited entry tag that was put out was up in the Duffy. And that was in 1973, I believe. Somewhere's in that range. So we haven't had any grizzly bear hunting throughout this area for 50 years. So I don't think that's got anything to do with, you know, the last population or whatever. But
Okay, for clarity, just for clarity, I was talking in the scope of hundreds of years, not necessarily in the modern. I'm well aware of the, that there was no hunting since the 70s here. But the tolerance of grizzly bears when the Sea Two Sky has been developed, was always been very low. It's, it's common in many areas in BC where there was no tolerance. Obviously, when the agricultural lands start to be developed, if there was grizzly in the area, there was zero tolerance. Bears at the time, it's well known that they were not tolerated and often shot or hunted. But we're talking about a scope of time that is way wider than my memory here. But yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah. Okay. And I live up in Darcy. And, you know, I've lived here now for oh, 25 years. And, and I get out and about a lot. And we've always had a number of bears in this area. And, you know, most often, you know, they stay in the high country. And yeah, they're, they're beautiful animals and they're wonderful to see. And, yeah, they just, they get along with everybody at this end, and we don't have a problem. The biggest concern I have is just the ones that are sort of making home in the Pemberton Valley. And then the mums are having cubs. And then those cubs, they get habituated to that valley. And then when the time comes that they start having cubs, you know, that, that population is, is going to, I think, run out of room. There's going to be too many of them in a small area. So just something that needs to be taken into consideration as we go forward. Thanks.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hefner.
Thank you. And thank you for, to our guests for, for being with us today. I, I was curious, I feel like I might, if you could untangle something for me, I just sort of heard something that was a bit conflicting between some comments from each of you. So I, I understand that, you know, on one hand, we had the, the statement that, you know, study grizzly, a grizzly just being around isn't, isn't necessarily a safety concern or, or isn't, and thus isn't going to warrant a response. But then on the other hand, which means, which I also sort of was, was hearing, hey, you know, like that's not newsworthy for us, just, you know, they're, they're around. But then on the other hand, we heard that some of the calls around grizzlies came too late, where they were already habituated. So I, I'm looking to understand myself and for those, those maybe tuning in that are interested, sort of what the recall is when they're, when, when someone spots a, spots a grizzly, so that we can sort of, so that the professionals can weigh those sort of, I see those as two ends of the spectrum. And maybe speak to tracking or whatever occurs in that, in that space?
No, that's a good question for sure. And I'll speak to it at first. And Inspector Gravel can kind of touch up if I miss anything. And that's where the WSR program really comes in to really play, that I can kind of action those early on calls. But also, when people aren't calling, like my example was the car thief bear in Pemberton, as you're aware of, a bear breaking into a car one time should merit a call to the RAP line. A bear breaking into a car, car five times should merit a call to the RAP line. But by the time we were actually aware of it, there was a bear that had been broken into 50, 100 dozens of cars and caused dozens of ICBC claims. Surprised ICBC didn't even contact us before even anybody in Pemberton did. So the early calls is when there's that public safety threat, when they're breaking into buildings, when they're accessing like the unnatural food source. So the early calls is when there's that public safety threat, when they're breaking into buildings, when they're accessing like the unnatural food source. Doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be actions, full guns blazing, get there in the field, but even uh, the WSR can make the calls, the WSR can go into the CEOs. But also the CEOs can make those calls early on when it's something like a bear breaking into a car. So it's better to call than to not call, even if you don't get the call back immediately or at all. If there's no, like, no officer is able to respond, it's better to make that call because we have a history conflict as well with bears that we keep like a, our system here. We can look back and be like, okay, there, this bear described is looking like this, having this behavior. And it's only one conflict history of it, one report in our system in the past six months. It's like, okay, this is the first time it's done this, this is the second time it's done this. But if we have end calls, I mean, like this conflict history of this bear has broken into ten cars, twenty cars, fifty cars. It kind of merits more of a response when there is that conflict history.
Thank you, Director Hopple.
Did I answer your question? Okay, Inspector Gavell might be able to touch more on that, but that is a good question there, I understand the confusion. And the WSR program will be able to um, contact every report that comes. So everybody wants to hear from a government official, as you guys know. If they have concerned citizens, hey, there's a bear walking in the field, what do I do? I feel unsafe. Uh, WSR will be able to call me like, hey, this is, you're not unusual to see this, this is what you can do to mitigate your risk, control your attractants, don't make it feel welcome. Um, never feed it, there's a whole list of things that we can action and educate the public on. But even just calling, making those calls, even if they aren't going to be getting those calls back, we get that conflict history in our reports that is quite helpful for us, that we can go back and kind of make a profile. Not to say profile, but like a profile of a certain bear or a certain area even, the problem areas and the problem bears.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's uh, that's very helpful and untangled, exactly untangled uh, that for me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, apologies for cutting you off, Laurie Hopple, Mayor of Lilowet.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. My question is, with bears being more habitual in basically knocking on people's back doors in some areas. Is there any success with the relocation program of bears, either black or grizzly? Because I know that, I think there was some bears Pemberton Whistler area that were relocated to the Botany Valley. And we often hear that when they're relocated, they go back to their initial habitat. So I'm just wondering, is there, do you have any success with that program or or not?
Yeah, it's a good question. Relocation is often uh, done, we, first of all, I should say that we typically don't relocate bear. We, there's some exception where a bear is just at the wrong place at the wrong time, we have to mitigate a specific situation. The bear will be captured and released, often very close by, is going to allow us to mitigate the situation. For example, an attractant that was unsecure at the time, or the bear ended up adventuring himself, you know, close to an undesirable location. So that's a circumstance where COS might opt for capturing a bear and releasing the bear. So it's not really a relocation for the purpose of hoping that the bear will stay away, but it's to mitigate a very specific situation. In term of the idea or concept of removing a bear from a population, bringing him somewhere else and hoping that he's going to stay in a happier place. It's not done from the COS side of thing. If we capture a bear and we know that the, the double USR, the Wildlife Ministry, the Wildlife Biologist wants this bear, this individual bear alive. And even if it's on the threshold that, that the bear cannot be tolerated on this landscape, they might want to keep this bear alive for population dynamic reasons. Find a different habitat and release this bear in that different habitat. That will not be our decision, it would be made by the Wildlife Biologist. Uh, I can tell you that they have uh, success sometimes, sometime it doesn't work. As you mentioned, a bear will want to come back where he belongs or where they belong. And they often, in my experience, just take a beeline to come back to where they were captured initially. So those decisions are not made by us, it's, we're just going to talk with the biologist, we'll tell them the situation. And if they want to try this relocation, uh, or what we often call translocation, meaning bringing a bear from an ecosystem or natural habitat to a different home range. Uh, it's totally up to them, and they use their knowledge, science, understanding of the habitat to take those decisions. Uh, but to clearly answer your question is not a solution, it's not, it's really a last resort that is often considered by biologists. When we tell them that if we cannot move this bear, the bear will unfortunately need to be euthanized because he's high on the spectrum of public safety. Does that bring some clarification? Does that bring some clarity or answer your question?
I think she might have left, actually, I'll speak to that as well, actually, quickly, that um. That's why when I said that it's almost ninety, ninety-five percent not a bear issue, it's often a human issue. Where uh, reducing the human cause of wildlife concern and conflict or habituation is kind of key there. I've been told by members of the public, well, why do I have to secure my garbage? Isn't that seems like a lot of work, when you could just come and relocate the bears? It's like, well, that's actually quite a bit more work than you, it's like uh, putting your garbage away, right? Also, it's like bad for the bear, bad for the bear population when it's dropped off in an unfamiliar new range. It's not like super high chance of success, honestly, so. We're trying to put the like, not to say the onus, but just like some sort of accountability and awareness on the members of the public and the people. If they can kind of take that extra two percent effort to help out the bears and help out mitigate that risk um, of habituation, then that's kind of the key and the essential, honestly.
Yes, it's important to understand that relocating those bears, like the bears that, for example, are on the landscape in Pemberton Meadows. Moving them in the different habitat is not an option. It's, it, it, it might be done as a last resource, if a bear is the threshold of being euthanized. Obviously, the last thing you want to do is having to remove or euthanize a grizzly bear for population reasons. So the biologist might consider if he is a candidate, and if they want to try the translocation in those situation, that will involve. I don't want to speak too much into it, but it will involve collar, coloring the bear, following the bear, and then if the bear comes back, likely to be euthanized. But again, that does not fall under COS responsibility, will be under the direction and supervision uh, of uh, the Wildlife Biologist from the Wildlife Ministry. We'll likely be involved to assist and help them to execute that in the operation side of thing, but ultimately will not be one of our decision. Any other questions?
Uh, apparently, it's hard to see.
I can't see that, no, Director Stoney from Squamish, yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you, I have two questions and thanks for the presentation and all your work. Um, the first question I have is, I'm just curious what messaging or how you address, one thing that I commonly hear is a hesitancy to call the rap line. Uh, and involve Conservation Service. And so I'm curious what sort of messaging or language you use around building trust for the programs that we have in community.
Yeah, it's a very good question, and obviously trust is important, and we're trying to uh, bring a lot of clarity and, you know, those presentation and making sure uh. Elected officer officials are also well aware of the role and responsibility of COS. And there's a great, a good understanding from the public about it, it's part of maintaining this trust. Often our trust, the trust is breached or people lose a bit confidence. Uh, I realize over time, due to the lack of understanding of our role and responsibility, they believe that our job is to manage a population on the landscape and. And avoid in a proactive fashion for those bears to get into conflict and find some alternative and so on and so on. But this, this scope is really outside of our, our spectrum. So for, for clarity, it's important for us to, for the public, and that's what we try to communicate, that our role is to respond to public safety threat. What, what the clarity or the lines are becoming more blurry is in Whistler and Squamish. The communities have been, went like, went above and beyond to implement the Bear Smart Program. And in the Bear Smart Program, it involves a commitment from COS to play more of a proactive role. Because the communities provide some in-depth services, like the WSR program, for example. And because the WSR program is closely attached to COS, then it brings this perspective and this role that COS will respond to proact, in a proactively fashion. But this is only possible because of the in-depth service that is provided by the municipality or the funding that is provided by the municipality. So when Pemberton or other communities around the province is looking for similar services, it just doesn't exist, it's not in place. And that's why we keep promoting this service, because we're well aware that from the public perspective, from our resident. This is a service that is often asked, I'd like someone to come here right now and help me with this situation. And they lose their trust in us if we tell them, I understand, but this is not my job, I'm dealing with a huge investigation, someone just poached some elk, for example, or someone. You know, or there's a public safety concerns, another community where our sea or predator attack response, for example, that is also fall under our mandate. So we're very limited in our capacity, we need to stay focused, we'd love to provide the service to, the, the, the service to everyone that called us, but uh. And not, and provide this intense capacity to everyone, but it is impossible. So that's why the promotion of the WSR program is part of our, our initiative here. And that's why we hope that more and more community around the province uh, will embrace and, you know, Whistler and, and Squamish are a model. And are very ahead of the game related to that. So to maintain trust, I, I hope, is that answer a bit your question?
It does, at least it was my second question, which is around, in particular, I think provincial advocacy opportunities. And so I think one of the things that we are learning is that this is a fantastic model, um, it's not perfect by any means, but it's definitely more proactive. It's uh, what the community tends to want, um, it's better, I think, for the bear population at the end of the day and, and the wildlife populations. And so where are, like granted, Squamish and Whistler have been able to do this, it's really hard to find funding for those programs from a local government perspective, especially for smaller communities like Pemberton or Lilowet. And so where are the opportunities to advocate to the province? Um, and where can we support you to expand that scope and make that model more available?
That's a good question, we, we've been advocate for it internally. Uh, I'm well aware and our executive keeps asking for more resource to, you know, an internal government pro- process. Uh, we, I'm well aware that a lot of communities or even residents are communicating to their local MLA and are asking for this in-depth service. And uh, increase of conservation officers or double USRO in their communities for increased funding. But as you know, probably have a very clear understanding, probably better than me, that the resources are extremely, extremely competitive at the government level. You know, they're trying to increase funding for hospital and school. And so we compete, we competing against a pot of money and resource that uh, is uh, extremely in demand from essential services. And now we're asking for, so we're a very, very small, we have a very, very small influence there. But I think in the, in the long term, more, more people are asking for this type of service. Through their different channel, you know, communicating with their local representative, I think it's probably the best pathway.
Thank you very much. It's very good work that you're doing, and appreciate you being here for the presentation today.
Thank you very much.
I think we'll end there, and I'll ask someone to move to receive the report. So moved by Jen, seconded by Director de Mayor, thank you, anyone opposed, all in favor?
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Be here too, very good of you to be here. And item number six, staff reports and other business, and we have Heather Paul here, CAO.
Thanks, everyone, send the reports.
Nothing, all right, well, that's very subnormal. Information Report, Climate Action Part Two Implementation Update, and we have staff Kim Needham and Claire Doer here, welcome, turn the floor over to you.
Morning, my name is Claire Doer, and I'm the Senior Planner here at the Squamish Thule Regional District. I'd be happy to give a brief overview presentation of the information report, Climate Action Part Two Implementation Update, and then happy to take any questions um, from the board. So the purpose of this report is to update the board on, um, one, the plan for LGCAP funding implementation. Two, proposed approach to integrate the SOD Climate Action Framework within the SOD Region Growth Strategy and RGS Review Consideration. And three, um, budget and work plan implications. So if we look at the LGCAP Funding Implementation Section of this report, the SOD will have um, one hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars of LGCAP funding in reserve in twenty twenty-four. And this funding must be used by March twenty twenty-five. At the Climate Action Part One Committee, the whole meeting, uh, the following direction was received, that staff develop a plan for LGCAP funding that considers EV charging stations throughout the region and heat pumps for SOD facilities and bring back to a future meeting. So work is underway to implement the EV charging stations and heat pumps as follows. The EV charging stations, um, looking to install two Level Two EV charging stations at the SOD office. Um, with respect to heat pumps, we're looking to install heat pumps at SOD facilities. With the Braylord Church, Garibaldi Fire Hall and Bertani Beach Fire Hall currently under consideration. And potentially other SOD facilities based on available funds. And then the third bolt there, um, brings in the Sea to Sky Friendship Trail, and it's um, being proposed by staff that any remainder funds be used to upgrade uh, trails. So just looking um, a little bit more context around some of the EV charging station um, work and, and research that's been underway. The Goldbridge, we looked at the Goldbridge Community Complex, and it's estimated that it would cost um, one hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand dollars for a Level Three EV charging station. Which is out of the budget currently available under the LGCAP Funding Program. Um, and it's felt that the Level Two Charging Station is not really practical, given the remoteness of the Goldbridge location. There's also challenges with the electrical panel at the Goldbridge Community Complex and need for upgrades and costs of that. And then just touching back on that Sea to Sky Friendship Trail opportunity, um. Staff are suggesting that, given the unpredictability of some of the costs associated with the EV charging and heat pump installations, that remainder funds be used to support um, Sea to Sky and Friendship Trail upgrades. As these projects are underway and connect to the November twenty uh, twenty-one Board Resolution around um. Developing a plan to increase availability of walking and cycling trails in electoral areas by twenty thirty. So it's connecting in with that outstanding or existing Board Resolution. And then just touching in on the other piece of work here on the SOD RGS and Climate Action Implementation. At the Climate Action Part One Committee, the whole meeting, uh, staff received direction to pursue the integration of an SOD Climate Action Framework within the SOD RGS and RGS Review Consideration in twenty twenty-four. The proposed process for this integration will involve reviewing and updating existing climate action strategic directions within the RGS. Prioritizing these directions, preparing a climate action implementation strategy based on this review, update and prioritization work. And then funding implementation from future LGCAP funding or other opportunities as they arise. And Appendix A is just sort of an example of what this process could look like. Showing what the existing strategic directions are in the, in RG, in the RGS, and specific to that climate action goal. And then how we can look to prioritize and connect timelines associated to those existing strategic directions. And I'll note that that um, sort of uh, approach and, and to the implementation strategy is how we've implemented our agriculture plans in the Squamish Valley and the Lilowet and Electoral Area B, and we've had um, good success keeping it simple, but also being able to action and leverage funding. And then just to touch on that, the monitoring and the reporting would continue as per the existing legislative requirements under the um, RGS. So that would be the, the joint actually monitoring and reporting. Flipping ahead to the budget and work plan implications, we just wanted to clarify, um, because there was some discussions at the Part One Committee, the whole meeting around the Resiliency and Climate Action Coordinator and. And, um, we can clarify that the budget for that position has been real, reallocated to other departments. So there's no longer a specific Climate Action Coordinator position and that this proposed approach and process um, builds off of existing capacities, funding and work programs within the Planning and Development Services and Environmental Services departments. So there will be no new budget or significant changes in work plan proposed with the um, approaches and processes included in this information report. We look at next steps, broken out into sort of the two pieces we're discussing here around the LG cap funding with Environmental Services taking the lead on the EV charging installation, um, and heat pump uh, installation. And then the Planning and Development Services taking the lead on the Climate Action Prioritization Implementation and Funding Reporting Monitoring Implementation Actions through the RGS work. Yeah. And then, I mean, I don't need to maybe go through again some of the Climate Action pieces, but I'm happy to take, um, questions on, on sort of that implementation strategy and what that could look like. Um, and then just in terms of that follow-up, actually, we see both work coming from Environmental Services um, and the Planning and Development Services, um, staff and departments, but I'll leave it there and happy to take questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And Claire Ford, go ahead.
Thank you for the report. Um, the funding that we have in the current budget, the one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, that came from a combination of grants. It's not general government money.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct. It came directly. It is the, um, local government Climate Action Plan Funding. And so that, that is all, um, a grant funding, yes.
Okay. And is there other funding that we could apply for, maybe through BC Hydro or, uh, to, uh, to be able to address that Level Three Charger for Goldbridge? Given its remoteness, it's even more important, I would suggest, than, uh, than less important because it is so far off the grid and it is so difficult. You know, it, it really is a barrier to accessing that area. Um, and I, I won't speak on behalf of Area A, but it seems like that would be a, a piece of infrastructure that we would like to, um, and.
Yeah, just, just looking at, at it, you know, we're going to have all our SLRD vehicles electric. So in the wintertime, when they have to come up to Goldbridge,
Yeah.
where are they going to charge? And it's got to be a fat, super fast charge.
Yeah, because you can't sit there all day.
Exactly.
Yep. Thank you. So, so through the chair, that was, that's really great, um, input. And I think that's something that we could explore, um, like in a future year. Right now, we're really working to come up with a plan to utilize the, the funds, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we have right now that have to really be used this year. And so trying to scope the projects with, um, with that amount of money. And I think there's absolutely opportunity for us to start looking to other funding sources. And I think it'll be helpful if we have some sort of implementation strategy around climate action where we can say, here are high priority strategic directions. Let's focus in some, um, funding or seeking funding opportunities to, to get work happening there.
Thank you.
Excellent. I see Director Pedigill and then Sam.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, happy to see this on the agenda. And I was, when we were talking about, um, putting the climate stuff into the RGS, I don't think I've fully understood what we were talking about. And I was a bit concerned that it was too high level and seeing the, the implementation strategy piece underneath gives me a lot more comfort uh, with the direction we're heading. So I was really pleased to see that. Um, I, I just, on the, the heat pumps we're talking about now, is there an opportunity to prioritize buildings that are using gas and maybe we're all electric with the infrastructure we're looking at anyways? And so it's a non-issue, but I'm just wondering, given the impacts of fossil gas and buildings, if, if we could prioritize, do a prioritization, prioritization based on that?
Thank you. Through the chair, that, that could, I would say that absolutely could be an opportunity. We're right now just trying to figure out what buildings have heat pumps and need heat pumps and, um, our fire halls, I, I'm not sure the nuances in terms of what their heat sources are right now, but it has, um, been brought to our attention that there's opportunity there around those fire stations being cooling, um, centers and the need that, that the heat pumps are also supporting some of our, um, emergency response hub work. So that's kind of, um, connecting in with other, uh, goals from other departments as well. So maybe why the, the, uh, fire stations have been highlighted. Um, and we are, those are kind of the buildings and facilities that have come forward as needing heat pumps. We haven't identified any others, um, of this time.
Okay, thanks. So, so yeah, as long as we sort of are considering that in, in all the things we're looking at, and I understand there's many sort of competing interests, uh, that'd be great. And then at, at this point, are you looking for any feedback or comments on uh, what might go into the RGS and/or the, the implementation strategy, or is that coming at a later point?
Thank you, sir. The chair, that, that work is to come. It was really just, the purpose of the information report was to come back with a bit of like, um, sort of like a game plan of how we're going to tackle that piece and, and to sort of show what that work could look like. And, and staff will absolutely be coming back to the board to help with that prioritization work. Um, that will feed into that implementation strategy.
Okay, great.
Prioritization and also, you know, we may, we may have gaps. And so I think that is where through the RGS review, we can also start to see what strategic directions we might be missing in that climate, under that Climate Action Goal.
Okay, I'll, uh, hold my comments then. I had some particular ones about the document we have, but I'll hold on that. Thank you.
Uh, Director DeMare.
Yeah.
I see you too.
Thank you for the report. I've looked in the LG cap uh, program and nonprofit organizations can utilize that funding, but they have to go through the regional district. So, um, on that concept, you know, we're, while we're talking about, uh, uh, heating and cooling and the, uh, emergency services is actually, I haven't, I don't know what the program is, but they're going to be creating community hubs in all of our rural communities. And, and those hubs should have eating and cooling. So when we start talking about LG cap, um, I'm going to make a motion at the end of this. But, uh, the nonprofit organization should be considered when we're, uh, reviewing where that funding is going to go. I predict that because of where we're going with our climate, that hopefully the LG cap program will keep them going, because that's a hundred percent. Whereas some of these other programs like BC Hydro, I mean, you're not getting much for what you have to install. And it's hard on, uh, small nonprofit organizations to be able to manage that funding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, and I do see Jen's man there, uh, but first, Director Hopple.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. It was an excellent report. Uh, my question is, after we use the one hundred and sixty-five thousand for the implementation of these EV charging stations and heat pump or heat pumps, can we apply for a BC Hydro rebate after that? Is that double dipping? Is that something that we can do after the money is spent?
Yeah, that's first.
Through the chair, I, I, that's a good question and that's something that staff can take back and look at. Um, yes, I don't have the, the answer off, off hand at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
We have what you have to ask before you incur any costs. And Director Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, I changed my pen cutter. Hopefully that makes it more visible. Um, uh, a few questions. Uh, so I appreciate the direction that you provided at the last committee, the whole, and I love where this report is going in the implementation plan. Uh, my first question is, um, as we incorporate this into the RGS, recognizing that Area A is not part of the RGS. So how do we make sure that the targets, the action items do actually touch and extend to Area A?
Thank you. Through, through the chair, that will be at the direction of the board. Um, we, you know, we're looking specifically at LG cap funding. There, that's not tied to our RGS. We can implement the, the LG cap funding as the board directs. Um, uh, it is, it is, um, our RGS currently does not include Electoral Area A. So that is, um, sort of the, the current context. And that is something that can be explored in the future. If that's of interest to the Electoral Area A Director and constituents or residents. Um, but as, right now, we're kind of working with what we have.
Yeah. Um, that just kind of dawned on me as I was looking through budgets and the consideration there. So I still think it's a good approach, but I think it's something that we will need to wrestle with at the board level. Um, and Director DeMare, how you may want to address that in terms of, um, the extension of the policies that may come, may come out of it. My other question was, um, on budget, and I just want to clarify how much you've actually allocated for the twenty twenty-four RGS review and scoping of this implementation plan.
Yes.
There is enough money and resources here to do all this work is what I'm asking.
Uh, yeah, through the chair, I don't have the RGS budget in front of me, but we do have enough budget to do the work that we need to do in twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Great. And then I'll also just flag, and I think our timing is off because in this report I see consideration of, uh, emissions data in the twenty twenty-five RGS monitoring. The District of Squamish is updating our Community Climate Action Plan this year. Um, so another one of those flags where if there is an opportunity, um, that means at least our data will be up to date for twenty twenty-five. But if there's, um, anything that we can do to piggyback off of that or extend the scope, uh, we will be getting some consulting services to help with the data gathering component. Um, so just a suggestion to reach out if there's an opportunity to piggyback on some of that, uh, GHG emissions data inventory.
Thank you.
Wonderful suggestion. I don't see other hands. Um, the Seaton Fire Hall, we partnered with Emergency Health Services a few years ago and they have a heat pump search and rescue in downtown Lilwet. Also, I provided some funding towards heat pumps. Um, they're terrific. Of course, you know all about the solar on the rec center. I thought of a lot of other contributions we've made that we can add as credits to the Climate Action Plan after yesterday's meeting, so. It's good work. And with that, I think we can ask for a motion to, do you see another? Oh, correct. Director Pedigill. The way the light's coming in, I think we don't all need to change his hands to like fluorescent pink or something.
And thanks, and thanks to Director Stoner for flagging the Area A piece, which I had forgotten about as well. Um, I, I do think that is a, a challenge with this approach. I, I think we need a regional approach to, to climate. And so, uh, I think it's really important that we sort of embrace Area A into the RGS and, and these plans. And then it all sort of works together. We can move forward together. So really hope to see Area A joining us in this work. And, uh, you know, from my perspective, we may have to rethink it a little bit if Area A doesn't want to. Because for me, the funding, the efforts and the resourcing all kind of fall under this RGS direction and sort of regional climate action. So hope we can get there. Um, thank you.
Really don't see any other hands. And then I will ask for a motion to receive this report. Thank you.
Oh, I now have two motions.
Excuse me? Final questions, Director DeMare?
I want to make two motions.
Oh, okay.
The first motion will be, uh, staff, uh, prepare a presentation to SLRD Area A regarding joining the RGS and the benefits of it.
Um, first of all, we would need a seconder.
And I should think maybe of the whole, or is this a motion that would then be referred to the board meeting that would then be approved by the board? Through the chair, it would be a recommendation to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before it's seconded, can I ask a clarifying question?
Did you hear the clarification, Director Stoner, which is just that this would be, this motion would be a recommendation to do this, to go to the board?
She's asking.
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question to staff on the motion. Which is, does inclusion of, I wish I could think about like process and timing, um, does inclusion of Area A major RGS amendment?
Yes, through the chair, it does. We've had legal opinions on this in the past and in past, uh, directors of Area A have, uh, not wished to join the RGS because, uh, it, it is legislatively kind of challenging to, um, get there. And there are a number of other reasons. We, uh, staff can, uh, research some of the past opinions we've had on this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Director DeMare?
Sorry, just could we get the motion again? I just want to make sure that I heard it correctly.
So, do you want to say it again?
Yeah.
With the change to recommend to the board?
This, this is around, uh, community input. There's no way I'm going to personally, as a director, say, yeah, let's join the, that strategy. I need community, community input, whether they want to or not. So.
You would have to, it would be significant.
Sorry, I was just looking for the wording of the motion is what I got.
In itself, is that staff, uh, prepare a presentation uh, to share with the community on, uh, the benefits of joining the regional growth strategy.
And I see Chair Ford.
Okay, so, uh, this kind of change would be, and I'll turn to Kim, but would be significant, like beyond significant. This would require public hearings. This would, so before, I think your motion is to ask staff to go away and come back with a report about what it looked like. Just because it's, it's, you're at step six and there's many other things that would have to happen.
I'm fine with that. I'll move, I'll move that one.
Okay, so then it would be to recommend to the board that, that staff prepare a report on us and what will be involved in uh, presentation to Area A about the benefits of being in the regional growth strategy, right? That, is that?
Uh, no, the process of getting us into it.
What you need to do.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll add, uh, we have a pretty full work program this year. Um, so we're pretty much at our max. Uh, so this would probably not be something for twenty twenty-four. We could certainly look at some of the legal opinions, et cetera. Um, but I just want to clarify that if there is concern about, um, Area A not being part of the RGS because there may be, um, policies related to climate change that aren't captured, um, within the RGS that would apply to Area A. I think what I'd just like to remind the board is that we are updating the Area A OCP currently.
Yes.
And that has a whole section on climate change and, uh, numerous policies relating to Area A and how, um, Area A can, um, work towards, um, reducing climate change. So I think, um, there are, there's a very significant body of policies related to climate change for Area A. And so, um, the fact that Area A is not in the RGS, that's not, it, it doesn't really impact, um, from a policy perspective, uh, anything to do with climate change. So I don't think there's a concern, at least not on my side.
Mr. Or, yeah.
Chair?
Just wanted to add one thing to build on, on, um, this point and where, what Director Needham was communicating. The, the Climate Action Implementation Strategy piece is, is the, the recommended approach is that it's actually an addendum to the RGS bylaw. So it's not actually within the RGS bylaw. So that there is an opportunity to update that work outside of the really big and onerous legislative process attached to any RGS amendments. So I think there is an opportunity for us to think about that addendum, Climate Action Implementation Strategy piece, um, as directly connected to the RGS. um, as directly connected to the RGS, but maybe we, that's a way we can still um, look to including Area A in that work.
That's very helpful. Thank you for reminding me about that, but it's not actually incorporated in the bylaw.
Good, sorry. Um, did I hear Director Crumpton?
Yeah.
Yes, you did. I'd just like to suggest that that this discussion of Area A joining the RGS makes the most sense at an RGS update process. And it seems to me just referring it to a future RGS update makes the most sense. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more. Do we, do we have a seconder for that motion? Are you changing it or?
So if you're changing the motion to, sorry.
Go ahead.
If you're changing the motion to requesting staff bring back a report on uh, the process of joining the RGS to a future date when work plan allows, I'll second it.
Yeah, that's.
Is that?
Yep. And 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 again, they looking at everything that we've done this week, these two days, you know, that work plan is critical. You know, we're talking about tax services and and the list goes on and on and on. And when I I've got four notices of motion at the end of the, uh, open meeting. So there's more and more and more, and, uh, that work plan is important. So we need to.
Chair?
Uh, Director.
Yes, I'll, uh, I'll go with that motion.
Thank you, Jack. Yes.
I I I think that we should uh, uh, just a suggestion to the Director Demare and and Director for, or Chair Ford, it seems to me that we should just request that consideration of Area A joining the RGS be a part of any future, uh, RGS update. Um, I I think bringing back a report in advance of that that creates additional work plan that is, that is challenged when if we just wait until there is an RGS update coming, then we can actually include it in a natural spot in the, in the, in the schedule.
Thank you. Um, unless you'd like to withdraw your motion, I think we have a motion. It's been seconded.
I think it still satisfies the same language that Director Crumpton is
Okay.
referring to without adding undue work.
Call a question?
Sorry, can we clarify one more time what the language of the motion is?
I will turn to Angela.
Yeah, through the chair. Um, the recommendation to the board is that consideration of Area A joining the RGS be incorporated into a future amendment of the strategy. And I can work with staff on working through that. Does that capture? I think so.
Is that satisfactory?
Director Nidham.
Okay. So I will just call for any opposed to that motion. The motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Second motion.
That consideration of nonprofit organizations be included in the LG cap funding program.
Clarification?
Yes, Director Stoner?
Director Demare, is that for the, the staff report has a proposed uh, process for using the current LG cap funding? Are you suggesting that we alter that for what's currently in the budget and needs to be spent in 2024? Or are you proposing that for future years of LG cap funding?
I'd like to see it in there. Then it's always there. So that, you know, uh, for for future funding or or even this one here, if these, any other ones don't fit. Because they're, they're still looking into this. These are all just being considered that are on there.
Director Nidham had a comment as well.
Yeah, just to clarify, I I think the, um, the report outlines sort of a game plan for how to spend these funds in a short period of time. And in terms of the proposed resolution, I don't know that it's necessary because the terms of the LG cap funding do allow us to look at nonprofits. So it's, it's sort of already there and we can do that if we get funding again in 2025. We can certainly look to adding nonprofits or considering nonprofits that are uh, pretty close to shovel ready um, in terms of, uh, different, uh, projects that we can add to this.
It's good to know. All right. So that makes the motion redundant then? Or would you still like to proceed?
Yeah, it's on record.
All righty.
Thank you.
Then we should have the motion read again with Angela, please.
Um, that it be recommended to the board that consideration of nonprofit organizations be included in the current 2024 LG cap funding program or future?
Future.
Future.
Current or future?
Future. CEO.
Through the, through the chair, I think the purpose of this proposal is this is the game plan. And the hope is that the game plan can start after this, after this is accepted by the board. I think the barrier for this current one for the nonprofits was the original motion was to look at SLRD buildings specifically.
Virtually.
And so that motion from the last board, um, committee, the whole meeting is what limited the scope. Um, so the hope is that this, because we're in a tight timeline in this game plan can and as I understand the LG cap, once you spend this, there's opportunity for more. As I understand, so. It's, it, it would be in our best interest to not delay this game if we want to continue to future fund throughout LG cap.
And does this delay this in any way?
Um, if it says for the current or future,
Right.
it would delay it.
So we're just going with future?
Just for the future then.
And when we have too much money on this program in our optimistic future, we look at that. All right, in that case, seeing no hands on the screen, um, is anyone opposed to that motion?
Needs a seconder.
Ah. Okay. Seconded by Chair Ford. Any opposed? That motion is carried as well. Is that it? Um, we would like a motion to receive this excellent report by Director Demare, seconded by Chair Ford. Is anyone opposed? Thank you. It's really brilliant. Good work, you guys. And we should take a break. Come on, it is 10:22, 10:30 please, a full eight minute break.
Stretch it out.
Resume at 10:30. Morning, welcome back. We're at item 6.3 on the Committee of the Hall, 2024 Regional Budget Meeting Number Two. I'm looking for Ms. Brown, and there she is. Morning.
Good morning, everyone. So I think I'll go ahead and share my screen again like last time. I can't see any hands or anything because I only have one screen, so just, um, give me a shout if you have a question. All right. Can everybody see my screen and is it big enough? Okay.
If you can make it a slightly bit larger, that would be great.
Is that better?
Uh huh, yes.
Great. So this, uh, meeting will discuss the regional budgets that affect all, uh, members, mostly all members. So there's the general government, the regional invasive species management, land planning and zoning, regional solid waste, utilities and environmental services department, regional transit planning and infrastructure, regional growth strategy, and the, um, sea to sky trails. We discussed assessment values at the last meeting, so I'll just breeze over that. And the draft requisition, so with these budgets, the regional board, um, budgets ends up with a $10 increase per million over last year's regional budgets. So this is not the full, obviously, the full SLRD budget. This is just those regional budgets that affect most and all members. Oh, and I've detailed that increases individually as well. So the main increase is for general government. Um, and now go into the general government, uh, service first. So I've highlighted some changes and additions that I made, but kept most of the same information just because I wanted to keep it whole. So people reading this that hadn't been around for the first meeting will understand things. So with this general government budget, the really great thing was when we would, when we did the operating interests for general government, so these are the interests on our operating funds that I invest versus all the reserves that don't hit general government interest. They actually go to the reserves. Um, and there was an increase there of about $90,000. So I was very happy to come across that. And then I updated the asset management software. So previously it was a total of 140 expense. I had 120 as the software and 20 as implementation, implementation costs. But realizing that the software wouldn't be over 100,000, I think 100,000 was very safe to use for an asset management software, and it probably won't even get that high. But using the Growing Communities Fund, we had 100,000, so I just kept it all for software. And we also had 20,000 for the, um, Community Works Funds already, um, res- resoluted for 20,000. So that's in the implementation costs. And, um, I updated the performance management software amount as well. In the previous budgets, it was um, 49,000 and it's, um, more accurate at 37,000. There was a $12,000 implementation fee that we had already paid in 2023 that was in there erroneously, so I corrected for that. So those are all savings so far. And now there's some new projects, so we wanted to add a new corporate indigenous relations, cultural awareness training. Okay, so that was already in the budget. Sorry. We increased it from 15,000 to 25,000. So there is a $10,000 increase in expense there. And then we had, so the Regional Connectivity Project was in the previous plan for 41,000, and I moved that out to to 2025. So you'll see that in the five-year plan under 2025. Um, we will look for funding to offset that. Right now it's not offset by any grant funding. Um, the time allocation, we added some additional projects in there. We want to review the Jack Webster Bridge for where the proper ownership should lie. We want to review the Black Tusk Sewer. So we added more time allocation expenses for these projects that will definitely have an impact on general government time allocation. And then we added a new project. This was what I thought I was reading previously, Indigenous Relations, Truth and Reconciliation, 17,500. And that's in 2024 and 2025 and 2026 for a total of 52,000 for that project. We, we envision it going ongoing for three years, potentially more. And those are the main points. I also updated the 2023 forecast figures. I, they're, they're becoming more and more accurate now, and there still might be some adjustments next month. So next month, March, board will have the financial plan bylaw uh, for adoption, and it'll include any little changes as well to the forecast for 2023. Um, and that's just to be expected as invoices come in and other costs are realized. Did you want me to go into the actual budget for general government, the, um, spreadsheet? Anybody interested in going through that, or is this sufficient for the general government review?
Sufficient, oh, Director Hopple, yes?
Just a quick question of clarification. The $25,000 Indigenous Cultural Learning and or the 17,500 for the Truth and Reconciliation, do either one of those funds include the C to C funding, or is the C to C funding especially for 2024, is that separate?
That is a separate, um, C to C community, um, that is a separate project and is still within the budget for, I believe, $10,000 of revenue and $15,000 of expense. I can open the check.
Okay, that's okay. I just wanted to know if it was included in those two or if it was indeed separate. Thank you.
It is separate.
Go ahead, yeah.
Hi, through the chair, this is, um, preemptive for a report that's coming in March from our Indigenous Relations Advisor that has budget extensions on some of the projects and research, research that she's been
Okay.
working on. So it's getting ahead of something that will be presented in March.
Yes, sir, I should have, I should have mentioned that. I wanted to have everything as much possible in the budget even before it was presented, just because it's much harder to add it after the fact when it's March and it has to be, um, adopted in March.
I think there are some questions about it, but. Okay, but, but yes. So Heather Paul's available to answer questions about that if you have them. I see a hand from Director Penningill.
Yeah, just looking at the five-year plan for general government, and it looks like there's sort of a larger jump in requisition 2024, 2025, and then it's fairly small, the increase in following years. Uh, I'm just wondering if you can speak to, is that sort of front-loading, um, more capacity, or are there particular things that reasons why we wouldn't spread that out or?
Yeah, mainly the issue with budgeting is you can't budget for a surplus or deficit in the prev, in the next year. So as you can see, general government usually has a large surplus carryforward, which is savings, which is carryforward projects, but since I can't assume anything carryforward, it does create a big difference in the taxation, because this 562,000 surplus right now is offsetting a lot of any need to increase taxation. But with the five-year plan, I'll just go to that one. I kept the same, uh, revenues, not knowing what they will be, because especially interest and so without that surplus, it does create a larger, um, tax requisition. So there's usually, so general government, when we budget, we want to ensure we have enough funding to get anything done. So there's usually, you know, enough legal costs, there's enough expenses in there, so we have the capacity to do things, even when they're added last minute. So there's usually a carryforward surplus, and unfortunately I can't show that in, in the five-year plan.
So sorry.
Answer your question?
Well, does that mean then, uh, like right now, 2025, we see a similar jump to 2024, and then it drops lower in subsequent years? Does that mean in 2025, because there may be this surplus, it may actually be more comparable to the following years?
2025, sorry, I don't see what you're talking about. So 2025, we have the requisition at 3.4, just say, and then 2026, it's, it's increasing and increasing and increasing, and that's just the increase in expenses with CPI and inflation.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at the, uh, estimated residential tax rate per 1,000 and just the changes in those numbers year over year, and it seems like a bigger jump 20, 24, 25, and then it's a much smaller jump in subsequent years.
Yes. Due to the surplus not being budgeted, you can't assume a, a surplus.
Okay.
It's all based on the same assessments, though. So they're all based on the reas, the most recent 2024 completed rule. Whereas 2025, when that rule comes out, we'll know what that tax rate will be. So these are just preliminary tax rates that aren't based on any kind of factual information for 2025.
Okay, I'll leave that there for now. Thanks.
I don't see any other hands, Suzanne.
Okay. Just gonna go back up to my note sheets. And we'll go to land planning and zoning.
And and then we have, you know, debt proceeds reserves. Sometimes we receive debt proceeds before we're actually expending the funds. So we transfer them to reserve so they can gain interest. They're all invested as well. So all of the pretty much as much funding as I can invest, I do so we can gain some interest. And I think that's about it. Do you have any other specific reserve questions you wanted to ask?
Well, you you've answered it all. Thank you very much. I think this is maybe for some of the new directors on board and for anybody watching. Because the reserves are a key component of the of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are done in terms of questions. Uh, no, Director Pennyfield.
Yeah, thanks. I was just waiting for an opportunity on sort of more general questions. And I know, you know, we heard we had a question about whether we had resources to do all the climate work. We talked about this morning and there was a conversation about the size of our work plan. And I think we have a heck of a lot of ambition. Um, and I know, you know, had C A O transition or trying to wrap her head around, you know, how do we tackle all of this? And I think. I guess I'm wondering if as a board, we need to be saying, uh, we want to see some more resources and make a bigger dent in that work plan or if we're at a place where we feel comfortable saying that. And I know there's been, uh, you know, some thought or some conversations at least about do we would like to see more bylaw enforcement in area D and things like that. And I gather this is sort of our our chance to to ask about those things. I'm just sort of would appreciate you hearing from my colleagues if we feel that we want to push for a little more. Is that realistic or we need sort of another year to really understand how to grow that capacity? I just hear a lot of conversations that, um, you know, we need to, uh, make a bigger dent in that that work plan. Uh, and I know it's not easy enough, as easy as if we have the money in the budget. There's hundreds of staff willing to to take the job. So there's other challenges, but, uh, yeah, I'm just wondering if we need to be having that conversation.
And I see, um, Mike Richmond, go ahead.
Uh, thanks. Maybe just in response to that, I think that they're they're good and important thoughts that Director Pettingill brings up. You know, this board sort of provided some capacity within the budget a couple of years ago. And that capacity has now been added, I think, this year and and last year. And and so I think we've already grown the capacity a little bit. I I I feel and I would want to hear from my colleagues and perhaps the C A O. I feel like, um, our new C A O needs some time as well to see. Well, to get to get installed, first of all, and and then to see what that new capacity brings and and understand the work plan. And and then maybe this is a conversation we could have again next year. But correct me if I'm wrong in that some of the capacity that we added over the last two years is really only being realized now. Yeah, I'd like to see where that goes.
Yeah, I hear you, Mike. And I see C A O Paul.
Thank you. Through the chair. I agree with both what Director Richmond and Director Penningill say. I feel that we can hold for a year with the exception of a couple of questions, which I'd like to bring up in a more closed conversation around H R. I think some clarification around the grant role is important and it's not something that I can. I'm I'm seeing it through mine for at this point. I'd also like to recognize that a lot of the work plan impacts are the E O C. So three years ago, the right this organization did an incredible job right sizing with capacity. And what we're seeing is based on a theory that E O C activations might happen once every four or five years. And we're now at a conversation of not if, but when when we go into E O C this summer. So what you're seeing now is this, this. We're right sized if we're not, our resources aren't focused on E O C for three months. You are seeing benefits, the data is there, whereas last year your carryover was a million dollars. This year it's half a million dollars. Part of that is saying with the investments of capacity you've made, more things are getting done. So keeping in mind that when you do see that, you will see less carryover which carry forward, which means tax rates change.
Yep.
So, um, I would say I'm not in a position right now, except for a couple of clarifying questions that I have around H R. I'm not in a position to say, yes, more capacity. There are a couple of red flags, but I think they can delay three sixty, three hundred and sixty-five days. And our biggest concern is what happens when E O C hits us. And the people currently working the roles won't be able to because they're focused on a higher priority.
That makes perfect sense. And Director Rainbow, you have your hand up?
I do. Just to follow on, Director Penningill just mentioned, um, bylaw enforcement in area D. This is something I've talked to Lee about quite a bit. It's something that, um, I've talked to planning staff about. We have some, um, actions going on in area D at the moment that, um, trying to address some of the issues with with events and some other things that we're not too happy with. The the advice or the unless it's changed, the advice I've had from Liam from Kim is that we we don't, um, can't really justify any, uh, increase in in bylaw enforcement at the moment. I I'd very much like to see, uh, more more staff available. I I understand the problems of of trying to enforce bylaws, especially in an area like the Upper Squamish Valley. I understand the 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 problems of, um, bylaw officers, the difficulties in attending some of the events that are causing the problems. The need for for cooperation with the R C M P and that's not always available at the times the the events are happening. But, um, I I think what what I'd like to suggest that we consider right now is, um, discussions between, I I guess, our staff and and District of Squamish staff. The possibility of, uh, either contracting some by bylaw work as needed from from the district or, um, having a a position that is is shared by the the district and and the S L R D. You know, I I have, I'm really confident in the work that Lee does. I I this is in no way a criticism of any of of what she has done in the past and what she continues to do. But she's part time. She lives in Pemberton and to get down to the valley takes a lot of time. And, you know, if someone were close by in Squamish and we're just looking at sort of thirty minutes to drive out there, they could perhaps be a little more effective. So I I I'm not sure where that fits, whether we need to put some money in, uh, uh, as a contingency. But but I would like to suggest that we begin those discussions with the with the district. Thank you.
Noted. I see Director Compton and also Director Richmond. Or is your hand still up or is that a new one?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I'm just wondering, we fund bylaw enforcement through planning, I think, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And do any regional districts set up service areas for bylaw enforcement? I just, it it would seem to me that area A, B, and C won't get the same sort of, don't require the services in the same way that area D does. And could area D set up a service area that funded bylaw enforcement?
Love to take that one. Suzanne, I'd like to talk about setting up another services. No.
Yeah, no, I think we need to hold back on the amount of service establishments we're trying to do and make sure they're actually valuable. We, you know, bylaw enforcement doesn't work on its own. There's there's managers involved, so that's why it's inland planning and zoning. And I think that's probably the best place for it.
Can you think of a mechanism or are are there mechanisms where one area can fund a s- service so that they get more of it over others?
I was just trying to attempt to answer that. So if if it's just to receive more taxation, I don't see the need to have a separate service area. You just have to increase that budget in land planning and zoning.
But wouldn't we be taxing people in area B for a service that is only received by those in D?
Yeah, it would be the same like all land planning, um, actions. They're covered by the full members.
I just, I I guess my concern is that we're going through a process now where we're consistently talking about a need for growing bylaw enforcement, specifically in area D. And I think there's no argument that it's needed. But we also are talking about going down a path of working with Squamish to contract services, and this is growing and growing. And if it's funded by planning, that means that all the electoral areas are funding a service that could get significantly bigger over time. And it is only consumed by the residents of area D.
Yeah, I think a a review would have to be done and to see if it actually is. The cost is worthwhile to have a separate service. Um, I think that the S L R D might do well with having a policy on creating services and having to go through certain reviews and analysis before saying, yes, this is a good idea. Because I'm worried that all these service establishments are going to get away from us and and not really be a a a meaningful addition.
Sorry, Ms. LaFrance, you've convinced me it doesn't need to be a service area. That's why I'm asking if there's any way to allocate more to a certain area so they can consume a service. And you're saying the only way to do that is through a service establishment?
Yeah, it, we would have to either, yeah. It would be hard to adjust the land planning and zoning service area. So if there was a need, say, the area D need ended up being quite a bit larger than any other area, then I think that that would be valid. Then then we can create a separate, separate area D service to fund, um, those actions. But to know where that, where that, that limit is, is really the key.
Great, thank you.
Certainly, we have those services. I can think of a couple, um, radio, TV in area B with low wet. It's just that surface area restricted to that geography. Anyway, I see Director Raymond and C A O Paul, would you like to say?
Yeah, I'm and this through the chair, this might just an observation that with land planning, a lot of the major projects might be in one specific area. If we 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 aren't, we're going down a super, we might be going down, uh, over analysis paralysis by saying, okay, well, every department, let's see how much it serves by percentage to each area. And that's why bylaws living under land planning and development, because they're so intrinsically entwined. And you might see one year there is over. You feel like a tighter bay and you look for, there's a lot of efforts happening in one area. Um, I don't know if you want to start par- parceling off different funding models to create. It that's, I don't know if that's, but it'd be good, it'd be, it's a good question, too, to see if there's other mechanisms and what are the regional districts to do that might be this separate, um, that there's such a difference between electoral areas. But I would be afraid of going into a data analysis that basically analyzed the efforts made for each electoral area in this organization.
Director Rainbow?
Yeah, just a a little more on on this bylaw enforcement. We we have a bylaw enforcement officer right now employed for two days a week. That's not the area D bylaw officer. She's the regional district bylaw officer. So she, yeah, it takes her a long time to get down and and do something at area D. It takes more time to go and do something over in area A. But she is responsible for for bylaw enforcement for the whole region. So I I'm suggesting we need more. We we and and if we base somebody in the the southern part of the region, whether we do it separately or whether we do it in conjunction with the District of Squamish, what that actually does, yeah, that that would be to service mostly area D. But it would also, uh, free Lee so that she would have more time available for areas, uh, A, B, and C. So in in a way that that, um, increased e- expense is not just just for area D, it it benefits the the whole region. Thank you.
Understood. Are there further questions for Suzanne? Proceed, Director. Go ahead, Jenna.
Thanks. Um, yeah, just on a different topic, I think picking up a little bit on Director Penningill's first question. Um, I think, thank you for walking us through this, Director LaFrance. I think every year I start to understand it a little bit better. It's still one of the most complex budgeting systems I've ever gone through. And I know for a few years now, we've talked about opportunities to improve the budget process and move it up a little bit earlier. Kind of get out of the cycle of we have a five-year financial plan, but I don't think we've really dug into fulsome five-year financial planning. It's kind of just based on the twenty twenty-four budget. And those are all big questions. I think this ties back to the to the resourcing question of we have a new deputy director who's fairly new. And so I just wonder if you can give us a bit of insight on what the ambitions might be for next year and looking forward to how we continue to improve this process. I do think it is already better than it was when I first sat around the table, whether that's my own knowledge or not. But, uh, yeah, just wondering if you can speak to that a little bit as we think about how this budget process changes over time.
Yes, thank you, Director Stoner. Little wins is all I can do right now. I like little improvements. This year is is kind of struggling because I I did injure my ankle and it's been hard to get everything completed. And and the deputy director now coming along, he's been around for a year now, so I can lean on him a lot more. So I anticipate next year will be a lot better. We also are updating our financial software system. We're still not hundred percent done that. But when that's done, I can use the internal financial planner. It'll take some, um, training for the managers, but this will be something I can do internally in the financial software. The managers can put in their input. And we just have to, um, start this process. I did use this financial planner in the past. It just got too cumbersome for me to do it on my own. So with the managers, the department heads, sorry, being involved. And it'll definitely help the timeline. And I think I want to start in June even like start, um, building these financial plans. We also want to do a long-term capital plan. It's just, there's so much on our work plan this year. It all depends a lot on the O Cs, too. And so we're 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 always trying to get as much done. I also have a lot of policies to update as well and create. So it's just, there's always something to do. And of course, the budget, I'm always trying to improve it. And yeah, earlier the better, I think. And, um, I also want to improve the general government line item. So I want to consolidate a little more. I don't think it's valuable to the reader or to the board to see so many line items. So I've been slowly consolidating those as well. It's hard because we ha- we have to see all the line items. So I I do I do have to double check that. But I think with the budget, um, and the financial planner, I'll be able to easily roll up, uh, figures.
Yeah, that's helpful just to get a little bit of insight into where this is going. I think one of the things that, uh, as we've talked about around this table is challenging is it's really difficult to reconcile like what a taxpayer in area D is going to pay as we go through budget discussions versus a a taxpayer in the District of Squamish or area A. And so, um, whatever I think we can do to get to, uh, a clear definition of of the overall impacts would be helpful for me anyways as I go through this process. But appreciate that it is a, um, arduous process to improve what we have and that we're making incremental changes and, uh, we'll get there eventually. So thanks for the update.
Director Rainbow?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I just can mention two things I'm I'm thinking and and I I I wonder if we need or if I'm able to do a resolution at this point or whether it should come at some other time. But I I would like to see, um, some some money allocated in the budget for for us to be able to double the amount of money we spend on, um, bylaw enforcement. So basically, um, allowing for an extra two days a week, whether it's the person we have now or whether it's a new person. The first part is we put the money in the budget. The second part is that I would like staff to, um, make some, have some discussions with the District of Squamish to see whether there's any possibility of, uh, cooperating or working with them, uh, and having an employee that is jointly funded. Now, should I make a a resolution now or should that come at another time?
Can I make a, uh, just a comment on that, Director Rainbow?
Sure.
So within the planning budget, the way that, um, it is approved in the financial plan is all of the operating expenses have a budget. So you basically can't go over the total operating expenses, um, for the year. Because we, that's what we put into the financial plan bylaw. And there is thirty thousand in there for additional bylaw expenses. That's keeping on continuing, carrying forward, carrying forward. I don't think we need to put any more operating expenses into the planning budget because of that. And I think that the planning staff can start, um, their conversations and use their time allocation. And then we have that additional thirty thousand that we can pull from. If they did start to do additional bylaw spend, uh, hiring or any kind of contract with the District of Squamish, I feel like that thirty thousand is enough for twenty twenty-four to start that process for planning. Because it has just been carrying forward and we haven't used that at at all. I think we reduced it slightly from it was forty-five, we moved it to thirty. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, okay, that I'm I'm happy to go along with that. Then in in that case, um, maybe I could ask, um, C A O, um, Paul a question. Would, should should I make a resolution to, um, uh, direct the direct staff to contact staff at, um, Squamish and have this conversation?
Um, I through the chair, thanks. Thank you, Director Rainbow. I I think just following up on Suzanne's comment, I would not want to make that recommendation without speaking to the Director of Planning and Development. They are aware of that line item and they have purposeful thought on where it's going and they're not privy to this conversation, which then reassigns them. So I think that conversation, it sounds like Director Rainbow, really you're asking to increase the bylaw capacity budget, but for staffing. And multiply it, double it. There's time, we have the other, we have March. So if there's, if if you, if I may, I would like to go back to staff and ask them about what that looks like so that we have a, uh, conversation amongst the three of us. And then, Director Rainbow, I think that we can take on contacting District of Squamish. It's not something that you need to step in on. I think that's saying if 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 there's if there's that direction from the board, we can, we can do that with the operations to operations in in Squamish.
Yeah, I I wasn't getting, wanted to insert myself in the processes anyway. If we don't, if we don't need, um, a a resolution, can I just leave it with you then? And you you know what I'm thinking? And I I'm happy just to leave it with with, uh, with C A O Paul.
I think it'd be good to hear just a little bit from other directors to see where their feeling is on increasing the bylaw budget to in basically dou- double service to all areas.
And I see Director Hertford.
Yeah, thank you. I think, um, and and thank you for, uh, to Director Penningill for sort of starting us on this, on this path of, hey, we can resolve if, you know, address a few. These are, this is the place, um, to, um, start some of these conversations. And, um, I think, you know, we started this discussion budget, which is really the mechanism to achieve things or one of the mechanisms. And I I hear a desire for increased, um, uh, bylaw in enforcement area D. So I I think, you know, um, it's not clear to me whether that, and from the comments, um, I've heard so far, it's not clear to me that, um, that the limitation to or the barrier to receiving that increased service, if you if you will, is is actually a finance, is a financial one, I need to address in budget or if it's directing work plan of existing um, or allocation of existing funds. So, um, I I think if we start from that, the the best point here is really starting from a desire to see a, uh, a higher level of of service, uh, whether that's permanently or or through, you know, one one season or whatever the strategic, uh, direction is. It to me, that's that's, um, the piece. And then how we go about realizing that, um, is what I'd like to to hear about from staff, whether that's partnering, you know, trying to find partners or or I I don't know, what whatever that, whatever that is. So, um, I'm I'm not, I'm not all the way there that we need to increase the budget to achieve, to achieve that. But I would like to hear about how we, um, how we can realize that, um, for the folks in area D.
Thank you, Armin. And I I see Director Mack and then Director Hoppon. Oh, and then Director Deman.
Yes. I think that, uh, you know, as as we've grown over the years, I think it would be wise to, uh, to consider adding more time to the, uh, to the bylaw officers. So if she's working two days a week now, um, I think it would be just with the amount of, uh, building that's going on, the amount of a- activity that's going on. I don't, I don't think it would be a a bad idea to think of going to three days a week just to, uh, allow that, uh, that bylaw officer to move throughout the whole regional district a lot more, uh, efficiently. So, um, I think we need to think about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Russell. Director Hoppon?
Thank you. So with bylaw, you know, I think it's always important to to reach out to the public. So in lower that we, as as each season progresses, we go through and we list what what we're looking for. You know, what are our concerns? Are you overwatering things that cost the taxpayer? So while while reaching out to the the public, you know, those those are taxpayer dollars that increase bylaw. And not being in compliance contributes to increase taxes. And I think people, we need to, we need to hit it with both ends. If we're going to increase the bylaw, then we're going to increase the taxes to cover that. Then we have to let people know why we're doing that. I think it's important for each of our communities, area A, B, C, and D, to also do that. Thanks.
Thank you, and Director Demer.
Yeah, thank you. Just looking at at, you know, if if we were to look at the, uh, uh, the work that's being done by the bylaw enforcement officer, how much of it is in, in in the spring, summer versus the winter? So, um, uh, you know, is it, is there a need more during a certain time of the year? More than another time of the year? Especially with, um, the agricultural, uh, properties that have, um, events. So, yeah, to me, it would, you'd really have to look at a little bit more, rather than just saying, okay, for the rest of the. rather than just saying, okay, for the rest of it, you know, we'll just add that extra day for the whole year. Is, is there portions of the year that we need more enforcement than other parts of the year?
Sure, Seth, we'd consider that. And I see Director Richmond.
Thanks. Um, you know, we've heard from Director Rainbow uh, the last couple of years about the need for increased uh, presence in Area D. And, and I, I believe him, I believe the, the need is real. Um, to me, if we're gonna look at increasing the budget, you know, Director Demer just asked another interesting question. Uh, to me, we need to hear from staff in that department to, to understand where the need is, what they feel gaps are and how that they could provide a higher level of service. So um, you know, whether it's doubling it, or as Director Mack says, adding one day, which perhaps is a good place to start. Uh, to, to me, to make that decision, we, we need to hear from staff um, from, from bylaw staff to, to, to get a better sense. And so in the short term, in, with regards to this budget, I'm hearing there's thirty thousand dollars in the budget that could be applied in this direction uh, as we move through twenty twenty-four. Um, so I feel like it's, we have enough in twenty twenty-four to, 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 uh, to start addressing this need and we can move ahead with this budget as it is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. That's a nice summary comment. I think we could ask for a motion to receive this regional budget, please. Director Board and Director Demer, is anyone opposed? Motion carried. Um, do we have a verbal update from the chair? Uh, not today? Not today? Decision on late business?
Uh, Chair?
Uh, yes, Director Peddingle.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I think uh, from what, how I understood the conversation, it's a piece hanging out where I, I think there was interest. I heard interest from the board in maybe understanding from staff. Uh, you know, the parameters or opportunity around increasing bylaw service. And so I'm wondering if, if it's helpful to have a resolution to that, or that can just come back at a uh, you know, one of the next few meetings.
Thank you. I, I heard C A O Paul say that she would follow up with staff. But we can certainly do a resolution if that's helpful. Just move tiny that way. Okay, yes, um, it's helpful to have a resolution. So let's back up then, I've received the report. But we can still go ahead and do a resolution. Yep. We have a budget? Yes? Tony?
I, I'm sorry, I, I was going to make a resolution, but I thought um, C A O Paul said it wasn't necessary, or she didn't need one. But um, i- if it, if it helps that um, um, let's see, that we uh, resolved to um, ask staff to consider the um, existing bylaw enforcement capabilities and to make some recommendations for, for the future. And I think that could include the possibility of um, hiring somebody for a short term o- o- over the summer months. I think that's a good point that Director Demer made and uh, but I, I'd just like to see something move along in this uh, in this area. So I'll, I'll make that resolution, that staff um, come back to us with some recommendations.
Got it. Uh, Seconder? Yep. Okay, uh, Director Ford, yes. Anyone opposed to that motion? Seeing none, motion carried. Thanks, Chris. Um, and Tony?
Yeah, thank you very much.
So I was deciding on late business, we don't have any late business, and so a motion to return, the committee of the whole.
I, I'll make that motion.
All right, moved and seconded. Anyone opposed to that? And now I'm gonna turn the chair back over and link all the really next decisions to Jen Board.